Good evening. At this time, I'd like to call to order the Planning Commission meeting of June 24, 2019. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. This is a flag. The United States of America. To the Republic. One Nation. Third. Pledge of Allegiance. For all. The United States of America. To the Republic. One Nation. Third. Pledge of Allegiance. For all.
Will the Secretary please call the roll? Commissioner Bus?
Present.
Commissioner Cohen?
Present.
Commissioner Lanson?
Here.
Commissioner Newman?
Here.
Chair McMahon?
Here.
Item number four, written comments, announcements, supplemental packets, continuances. Are there any written comments?
Thank you, Chair. There is one supplemental item related to item 7C on the agenda. It's clarification of a condition of approval prepared by staff.
Okay, thank you. I think we all received that. Okay. Item number five, public comments. Now is the time for public comment. At this time, any person may address the Commission regarding a city planning matter that is not on this evening's agenda. Should the Commission wish to discuss an issue raised by a member of the public, the issue will be referred to staff for scheduling on a future agenda. Anyone who would like to speak under public comments must complete a speaker card and file it with the Recording Secretary before the public comments portion of the agenda is called. The speaker's remarks should be addressed to the Commission as a whole and not to an individual commissioner or staff member. I do not believe we have any speaker cards. Is that correct? For public comments? Okay. The consent calendar. Next, we have the consent calendar with the minutes of June 10, 2019. Do any of my fellow commissioners have any comments? Or is there a motion to approve the minutes? Commissioner?
I would make a motion that we approve the minutes.
Okay. All right. Secretary? Let's see. Please prepare us for a vote. To put the motion button. You have... So Commissioner Lanson has to do the button? Is that correct?
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. Then we have item number seven, Planning Commission public hearings. Let's see. First is item 7A. Secretary, will you please open the public hearing?
Hearing advertised as required by law is hereby open to consider Agenda Item 7A. Case numbers Z 2019-70298, DP 2019-70291, OTP 2019-70292, PMW 2019-70293, MND 2019-70309 to allow a zone change from single-family residential R1 and single-family estate RO to public quasi-public and institutional lands and facilities PL, and a parcel map waiver to merge five parcels into two lots of record encroachment and minor pruning of 13 protected trees, no removals, for the development of a park on an undeveloped park site located at 901 Page Lane and 835 Combs Avenue, including assessor parcels number The applicant is Canejo Recreation and Park District.
Thank you. And the senior planner tonight for this is Kristen Rice. And welcome. Excuse me.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to make sure everyone had the opportunity to meet Kristen. She's one of our new senior planners here with the city. She's been with us about two months. We're very lucky to have her here, and she just jumped in with both feet and hit the ground running here. This is one of the first cases she was assigned when she showed up, and we look forward to hearing her present this item.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Commission, Mr. Parker and Assistant City Attorney Heer. Tonight, I have prepared a presentation for you. The proposed project is to allow a request for a zone change, a parcel map waiver, development permit, and an oak and landmark tree permit for the development of a park on an undeveloped park site. The subject project site is located immediately west of State Route 23 and north of Highway 101 within the city. The subject site is approximately 14.1 acres and is known as Canejo Creek Southwest Park. It is owned and managed by the Canejo Recreation and Park District, and the undeveloped site is located north of Combs Avenue, west of the 23 freeway, and is bisected by Page Lane. Access to the subject site is available from Page Lane and Combs Avenue. The project site consists of five parcels. While it's not clearly shown on this map, two of them are located west of Page Lane, comprising 7.18 acres, and the other three parcels are located east of Page Lane and total 6.92 acres. The surrounding uses include single-family residences to the north, the west, and the In the late 1990s, CRPD utilized a focus group and held several open community meetings to obtain feedback and input towards their master plan, which included the subject park site. As such, on January 21, 1999, the revised Canejo Creek Park Master Plan was approved by the CRPD Board of Directors. And in January of 2018, CRPD held an open community meeting to confirm the direction of the park and solicit feedback from the public. And because of those comments, certain park amenities were included in the proposed project tonight. Following the outreach, CRPD enlisted Enviocom to prepare an initial study and mitigate a negative declaration for their park project to evaluate environmental impacts. The MND was prepared and circulated for public review and comment in January of this year. And after the final MND was issued, CRP submitted the proposed project to the city in April of this year. On May 21, 2019, City Council approved a request to allow for concurrent processing of the applications. In order to develop this park, the following permits are being requested. A zone change, to change the existing single-family residential zone and single-family estate zone to public quasi-public and institutional land and facility zone. There's a development permit being requested to develop the park and associated amenities, and an oak tree permit to encroach and prune protected trees on-site. There's also a parcel map waiver being requested to merge five parcels into two lots. This is a photograph of the site looking northeast, standing approximately the intersection between Page Lane and Combs Avenue. This is a photograph looking northwest from the intersection of Combs Avenue and Page Lane. And this is a photograph standing towards the northern portion of the property, looking south, back towards Combs Avenue. And here, I'm standing on Combs Avenue, looking north to the entrance of the bike path that runs along the northern property line. And to the left and adjacent to the park is Lang Creek, which is also the Ventura County Watershed Protection District's jurisdictional redline channel. The Planning Commission is reviewing this project tonight because the Thousand Oaks Municipal Code states that a development permit requires review and approval by the Commission. However, because the City Council is the decision-making body for a zone change, the Planning Commission shall make a recommendation to the City Council on the proposed zone change and all associated permits for the proposed project. The subject property is designated existing parks, golf courses, and open space on the land use element map of the general plan. However, the property is currently zoned R1 and RO, and a park is not allowed use in those residential zones. So to allow for the development of a park on the subject property, a zone change is necessary, and therefore, CRPD is requesting the zone change, consistent with the city's general plan land use designation. The proposed park is intended to be a neighborhood park with passive uses. As shown on the rendering, the proposed park features include a themed playground, a single occupancy restroom... I'm sorry, restroom? That would not be passive. Single occupancy restroom, parking lot, picnic structure with picnic area, a multi-use court, sand volleyball court, multi-use lawns proposed for various age groups, a native earth equestrian trail, which is proposed along the perimeter of the site, and a pedestrian path, which would also run along the project perimeter, parallel to the equestrian trail. Bike racks and various fitness nodes are located along the pedestrian trail, which I'll kind of point out. So this is where the existing bike path is right now, and then there's the trails that go around the park. And then this inner line in here, this gray line, is for the inner pedestrian trail, which runs along these areas. The theme playground is right here, and then the fitness nodes are on various paths of the pedestrian trail. So there's one over here and one down here. And based on community outreach that they did previously, they've also added an additional feature for a horse corral, which is incorporated into the proposed project as a future improvement, and that's located here where the dashed line is. This is just another rendering specifically of the playground area. The project involves the construction of a porous asphalt parking lot with a total of nine angled parking spaces, including one ADA space at the neighborhood park entrance accessed from Page Lane. The parking lot will be available for visitors to the community park. Typically, street parking is available for a neighborhood park. However, per the city's traffic division, no parking is allowed on Page Lane. So based on the passive characteristics for this neighborhood park, it's anticipated that most trips to the park will not be via automobile. Traffic impacts, as those described in the MND, were determined to be less than significant, and therefore, the CRPD determined that nine parking spaces would be sufficient to serve the needs of this particular neighborhood park. The impervious surface currently on the site is the multi-use path that runs from the north of the project site to the west of the project site. That's this part right along here. Of the proposed project improvements to the site, most of the project surfaces would remain pervious with lawns or landscape plantings, with the exception of the single occupancy restroom... Not restaurant. Multi-use court and playground structures. The asphalt for the pedestrian trail and parking lot would also be porous to allow for permeability. The project is designed to retain its historic drainage patterns, which allow continued water recharge, and several bioswells are proposed throughout the property to collect and infiltrate Also, during construction, the project is required to comply with an approved stormwater pollution prevention plan, and project operations would be subject to compliance with the existing The next thing I would like to discuss is the oak and landmark tree impacts. There are 47 protected trees located within the project site area, and for the specifics of this particular project, that's the area located outside, basically south of the bike path. There are approximately 192 oak trees that are located within the oak woodland, which is located here in this big cluster of green area on the northern portion of the site. This map shows that where there are the green portions, these are trees that will not be impacted by the proposed project. The trees that are showing up in yellow are indicating where there will be proposed encroachments by the project, and the areas where you see little bits of red, those are the areas that the applicant is requesting to prune the oak trees. The oak tree report indicated that encroachment activities would not result in significant long-term adverse impacts to the oak trees, and to further ensure that adverse impacts to the trees are minimized, a series of mitigation measures have been included as project conditions of approval and within the mitigation monitoring and reporting plan. For this particular project, CRPD is the lead agency, and the city of Thousand Oaks is the responsible agency. The city's responsibility is to review and consider the MND, but it is not required to approve it. And thus, for your information, the draft MND was released to the public for review in January of this year. They received three public comments, which included one from a neighboring resident, the second comment was from the elders council, and the third comment was from the California Department of Transportation. Responses to comments were included in the final MND. And on March 21, 2019, the CRPD Board of Directors adopted the MND and mitigation monitoring program, and the CRPD resolution was included as an attachment in your packet. Since the application was submitted to the city, staff received one public comment from the Ventura County Watershed Protection District. Their comments included a statement that the Lang Creek is a jurisdictional redline channel, and there shall be no increase in peak runoff. I forwarded the district's comments to our Public Works Department, which reviewed their comments and included conditions of approval to address their concerns. In conclusion, the development of this park will satisfy the Canejo Creek Park Master Plan and benefit the neighboring community with passive park and recreation amenities. And lastly, just wanted to note that the proposed project does meet all the required findings, which were included in your resolution. Therefore, staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt a resolution recommending and MND 2019-70309, based on the findings and subject to the conditions. That concludes my presentation, and I do want to point out one housekeeping item. I'd like you to please note, there is one spelling mistake on the resolution. Please note the header of the resolution that states the Community Development Department Conditions, says VTM 2019. Oh. My mistake. That's for the next one.
Thank you.
That concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Do we have any questions with staff? Let's start at this end, please.
Good evening, Ms. Rice, and thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
And welcome. We're very happy to have additional planners on staff. In your report, you gave the number of trees that are both immediately on-site and adjacent to the site. And my question is, does that number cover trees that currently exist there, or trees that would also be planted in the future?
The number that I provided in the staff report is the number of the trees that are there right now, and then there was a separate number provided in accordance with the proposed number of trees on their landscape plan. There are two separate numbers.
So the numbers you provided in the presentation tonight were 47 and 192. Those are currently existing trees?
Correct.
Okay. So before your time of last year, back in the ancient mists of time, the Planning Commission recommended to and the City Council approved a rather large development at 299 East Thousand Oaks Boulevard. And during the hearing before this commission, both city staff and the applicant represented that the replacement trees, and it was, let's see, 12 protected oak trees and eight protected black walnut trees, would be replaced at a three-to-one ratio, and that some or all of those trees would be located on this Page Lane site. So my question is whether, in addition to the numbers we've just discussed, whether the 14-acre site would be able to accommodate that additional 60 trees?
The answer is yes and absolutely, because I do have that as a condition of approval also referenced for this particular project. But as part of their landscape plan, there were approximately 150 trees being planted on-site.
And that number, the 150, it does include the replacement protected oaks, and I think they're live oaks, and black walnuts?
Correct.
Great. My only other question is, what, once work begins, what is the estimated time to completion to develop this park?
That I don't have an answer for you. I'd like to defer to the applicant for the specific answer on that.
I'll follow up with the applicant.
Thank you.
Thank you. Nothing further. Thank you.
Any questions over here, Commissioner?
Thank you, Ms. Rice, for your report. I just had a few questions. The five parcels that are involved in this process, are they all owned by the city?
I believe they're all owned by CRPD. That's correct. All five parcels are owned by CRPD.
Great. The public comments that you mentioned, there was the three initially and then the one that you highlighted later on. And again, as the one you highlighted later on, can you identify the condition that incorporated whatever change that they had requested, so we can look at what that one was?
Sure, absolutely. If you get me... They are conditions of approval number 34, 35, 36, 37, and then 38 and 39 are standard.
Thank you.
Which address the county's concerns.
And as to the other three initially that you received, it sounds like from what you said, you incorporated their comments as part of the process. Is there any part of the comments you received from the initial three that were not ultimately addressed as part of the package?
So all of those comments were submitted to CRPD, actually, because CRPD was the one that had prepared the MND through Enviocom. So those three comments in particular, one was the concern for stormwater runoff, a second one was concerned about any potential cultural resources on-site, and the third one had to do with just a standard condition for notification for work in a right-of-way.
Okay, and we'll ask the applicant, but all of those were incorporated as part of the plan, right?
Correct.
And then last, just last question about the horse corral. When do you anticipate that would be?
I'm sorry, can you repeat?
On the horse corral concept, when would that be something that would actually be in existence?
That's another question I would like to defer to the applicant, as far as I understand that that's just listed as a future improvement at this point.
Thank you.
Commissioner?
Yes, Ms. Rice, thank you for your presentation. I just have a couple of questions about the actual structure of the park itself. Most of the parks I'm familiar with within the city limits are not bisected by a road. We're talking about a park that's going to have a playground in it. We're going to have nine parking spaces. My first question is, what is the access for pedestrians like? I'm familiar with Page Lane, and I'm familiar with the other side towards La Granada, and there are no sidewalks in those neighborhoods, nor are there streetlights. So I'm curious, have we taken that into account as far as the design of this park?
We did. Well, I should actually say probably CRPD did. I know that they did a considerable amount of outreach with the community and then also worked with the city to design the park in a way that was sensitive to the community's needs. Street lighting in specific was eliminated because you don't want too much street lighting to impact the neighboring homes that are nearby. It's intended to be a park that's primarily used just during the daytime, so it's not intended to be used after the sun goes down. That addresses the street one. Does that answer?
Okay, I've got that part. So the lighting is because we're not anticipating this park being used anytime after dark. My other question is, is that we're only allowing for nine parking spaces, but at the same time, so we're asking the neighbors to walk there. I know that based upon the design drawing, it looks like there's going to be sidewalks at that particular section of Page Lane. But are we planning on incorporating sidewalks on the far side and the other side, as well as off the Combs Avenue? Is the city going to build a place for the kids to walk? Because that is a narrow street.
It is a narrow street. However, let me go back to... It is narrow, but I would anticipate that people would be walking along the pass to get from one end to the other.
I don't mean actually within the park itself. I'll have a question about that later. But getting to the park, as far as access for pedestrians? So the streets that lead to it, Combs, Page on both sides, none of that has sidewalks. And so I'm curious, if we're saying that nine parking spaces is enough, my question is if we're encouraging the neighbors to walk to it, have we decided that this is a safe street for people to walk on? Page Lane is kind of known as an accessway from Hodencamp over to Erbs, and people do not necessarily drive extraordinarily slowly there. Have we done traffic speed studies or pedestrian walk studies?
I'm going to have Kathy Naum answer your question. She's from the city's traffic division.
Good evening, Kathy Naum, Public Works. So, yes, you're correct. There's no sidewalks on Page or on Combs, and there's no sidewalks in Caneo Oaks. Because this is a neighborhood park, people are familiar with walking close to the, in the street, we'll say, and out of the middle of the street. But it's narrow. But when you come from Caneo Oaks, you can immediately get into the park on the north side, and then you're in the park. And the same thing if you enter the park from the south at Combs, you're immediately in the park, and they will be encouraged to cross at Combs if they're going back and forth between the parks. So that's... It's a neighborhood park. We're not having cars park up and down Page Lane because of the narrow width of Page and that there is no sidewalks in Page. We don't want people parking on Page, incurring people to walk on Page Lane.
Gotcha. My other question is, just because you're pretty familiar with the parks around, can you think of another park in town that's bisected like that by a street that I consider not necessarily a residential street, but kind of a main drag, because people are going from one part of town to another there?
I could defer to the CRPD. I would say, in one sense, I don't want to say Page Lane is a main drag, because it's a low-volume street. It's...
So we have done traffic studies on it?
We have speech studies, we have volume studies, but the amount of traffic generated by this park wasn't...
Not by the park itself. I'm talking about people trying to get from one side of town to another. That is a convenient backstreet for people to use. From Hodencamp, basically the Hillcrest, Thousand Oaks Boulevard side on that side up to Erbs Road.
Right, which is why there's speed humps on Page Lane. They're actually the first speed humps ever installed in the city are on Page Lane, which highly discourages people. And also, there's speed humps on Combs.
And that's why I bring it up, because I'm familiar that this is a street people use. And... And that section there, are we going to add more speed bumps?
No, our speed bump policy, you have to have homes fronting the street as a residential street. There's specific guidelines for installing speed humps in this part of Page Lane would not qualify for speed humps.
So in the drawing, I see that there's a crosswalk. And we're anticipating this park being used by children. And so my concern is, is that that's the part of the road that people will know they can speed on still.
Hopefully they'll continue to go the speed limit. They're not speeding. And there is this, the area in between the two parks that's not at Combs, there's, that will be if people want to cross, be more likely they would cross there. But we, the way the parks, the CRPD designed the park, doesn't seem like they're going to be necessarily a strong interaction between the two parks. You would just be on one side or you'd be on the other. And mostly everything's on the east side for the families.
There's also an equestrian trail that wraps around the entire outside of that.
Right.
Are we going to have any kind of a horse crossing signs, anything like that, anything set up?
You mean a horse crossing at Page Lane?
Yeah, yeah, across Page Lane itself.
Yeah, at Page and Combs, there'll be the signs, the regulatory signs that we would put in, or regular to warning signs to let cars know that that would be where equestrians would be crossing. They'd be crossing down at Combs, not just anywhere across Page.
Yeah, I, I'm familiar with that. Okay. I think you've answered, oh, my questions. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Do we have any other questions with staff? Okay, let's see. Thank you. And now we'll ask for the applicant to speak. You will have 15 minutes. And when you speak, please state your name and city of residence for the record.
I'm Hare. I live in Newberry Park. I'm representing Canoe Rock and Park District. Thank you very much for hearing us out tonight. And I mean, I really didn't have to do anything. Kristen, that was a fabulous job that you did today. So thanks for this opportunity. This is a really great project that we've had. We acquired this project, or excuse me, property back in the early 70s. So this has been a long time coming. And Kristen kind of gave a little bit of the history that we've had, but we started in earnest with the planning probably in the early 80s. And we went through a lot of different iterations. And so this project has been a long time coming. So we're finally, we're here. We're ready to do this project. And as far as the design goes, and before I'll address some of the commissioner's questions, I want to thank again Public Works and also Community Development. We've worked really closely with them for the last year or so on the design of this park. It's been a good collaborative effort. In addition to city staff, we've also worked with outside organizations and agencies such as Ventura County Watershed Protection District, Equestrian Trails Incorporated, and also the Two Mesh Incorporated folks. But most importantly, we work very closely with the community and what their desires and needs are. When we had that community outreach meeting, one of the big reasons we did that, because the last time the, we did the master plan was the late 90s. Our whole generation had passed since the last time we took a look at it. So we had a meeting out there. We had 40 to 50 people or so out there. And we're just kind of touching base with them, saying, is this what you guys still want to see? They had a few different little tweaks. One of them was the, I think Commissioner Larson, you had mentioned about the corral. The equestrians in that area right now and have for years have been using the park site as a loop. They go there and they exercise their horses. So they asked if they could have a corral. And then one of the reasons we put it as a future corral, because one of the, we have a partnership with ETI Corral 37 over on Caneo Creek West, which is just north of Jan's Road on the other side of the 23 freeway. Or excuse me, the same side of the freeway. We would like ETI to work with the neighbors there because we would need some representation, some organization representation. So if there was a corral there, so they could maintain and operate the corral and the proper footing. This is something that CRPD is not experts in. But we would like someone else to take the responsibility for the maintenance and operation so that corral so could be properly done for the users. What else? So some of the other highlights that we had of the project, very similar design, what we've done, and if you're familiar with the successes that we've had at Sopewee Trails Community Park and also at Banyan Neighborhood Park. We did, we had an undeveloped portion there that we developed about a year and a half ago. So and Sopewee opened up last September. With both of those, minimal grading, respecting the topography, water conservation, drought tolerant, again, very, very successful projects and very, very successful with, also with the patrons that are there. Another thing I'd like to point out, and Kristen kind of touched on it, this park, I believe, will provide a really good linkage, you know, using the existing bike park that's, or bike path that's already there. But with the trails that are going in, whether it's equestrian or walking paths, and then just the development of the park in general, provides an extra, extra set of linkage and connectivity from the south to the north to the community activities that we have at the Caneo Creek North, the library, the teen center, the senior center. There's also shopping up there. There's also linkages to schools. So this would be, this is a very important park to fill, to fill that void there. Some of the other, let's see, some of the other questions that Commissioner Bus was asking about the public access. And Kristen did a real good job of, and Kathy also, about talking about what we consciously separated the east as a much more, it's still passive, what we consider passive recreation, but it's our more active passive recreation, if we want to call it that, between the playground and the volleyball courts. So all that stuff is on the east side. And, but there will, and the west side is mostly just the equestrian trail under some fitness nodes and a walking path. So that's the very, very passive side. We did provide the public access on the north and the south of the park. So once, once the patrons do reach the park, they can easily access it. We did provide nine parking spaces there. And it's a, neighborhood parks, it's always a really, it's a balance of providing too many spaces or not enough spaces. Sometimes if you, if we, you know, I'm exaggerating, if we provided 50 spaces there, then all of a sudden people from the outside would be coming in. The neighborhood parks are supposed to serve just that, the neighborhood. But just in case, we put a little bit of parking there. So just if, if you weren't, we're not able to walk there, you could also drive there. Let's see. No, we do not have any other parks like this where there's bisected by a roadway in between. Let's see, what else? Oh, the comments on the MND, I think Commissioner Larson had mentioned that for, we had. One of them was, he has a standard Caltrans comment. Another one was regarding cultural resources. But again, fairly standard stuff, just make sure you, you look at all the cultural before you start grading and digging. And then one comment we did receive from a resident was he was asking if we had coordinated any efforts with Ventura County Watershed Protection District regarding using this as a detention basin. And the answer was yes, we did. Even, we thought of this because we had met with Public Works way, way before we, whenever we have a project, we always meet with Public Works and Planning, saying, okay, let's, let's take a look at what we can or can't do here. And we actually did bring in Ventura County Watershed Protection District and said, what can we do here to maybe help each other out? And Ventura County Watershed Protection District came back with, it would have been a hole. You know, unfortunately, instead of just, hey, let's lower everything by a foot here and raising this by a foot, the whole thing would have been a hole. We would have lost a lot of the protected trees. And it just, it unfortunately just didn't pencil out between the two of us and we couldn't do what they, what they would require. So then in summary, and then I'll be available for questions. The, the community needs this park. If you're familiar with the, CRPD's master plan is the recreational element of the city's general plan. And what we do, we take a look at our parks throughout the whole district. And we try to use a ratio of 10 acres of parkland per 1,000 residents. So parkland is spread out evenly throughout the whole community. And this particular zone and planning area is deficient by 14.8 acres of parkland. So by, by providing this park of 14.1 acres, we're satisfying the need and again, filling the deficiency that's in this area. And the benefits of a park, which I'm all sure you're well aware of, because you all look like you're about ready to go out in the park and have some fun. It can't be understated, you know, for parks and what we try to do and it's, we've been, have a successful history of it and working with the city of Thousand Oaks and the school district and getting the whole community involved. Our parks are for all ages, whether from little kids to seniors. You know, they provide opportunities for passive and active recreation. And it's been proven throughout the years that parks strengthen communities, reduce crime, encourage volunteering and promote stewardship. And simply put, as one of the mottos that we've developed throughout the state is, simply put, parks make life better. So I'm available for questions.
Are there any questions of Mr. Hare? Let's start at the far end. Are we back?
So Mr. Hare, yeah, my biggest question was, and I appreciate you bringing up the fact that the parks are deficient in this neck of the woods. When I was asking about the access, the thing I was thinking most about is there's a lot of apartment complexes on that Hodencamp-Wilbur corridor there. And so for those kids to be able to get from their homes to that park seems like a little bit of a dangerous stretch for me. And that's, then that's why I was, I was asking if the city considered that. And I think that that part of the community will probably be most served by this park just because of where they're located and the number of children in that, in that neck of the woods. So I ask you again, have you and the city talked about who, who the community is beyond obviously Caneo Oaks and Page Lane residents?
Definitely. But then we look as the agency that we, for lack of a better word, the city of Thousand Oaks gets them to the park and, you know, we, we provide, we open the door for the park.
So that would be the city's concern primarily from your perspective. Okay, that's, that was my only question. Thank you.
Commissioner?
Thank you, Mr. Hare. Initially, I want to apologize for not sending you the memo that we were casual, whereas you were in the suit.
Calvin will re-apologize.
Yeah, okay. As to the, just the horse corral concept, is ETI going to be a tenant in terms of running that at some point?
I know, a partner, we'd look at as more of, because we have, are you familiar with Caneo Creek West?
Yes.
It'd be very similar to that.
Okay.
So if, if, and we'll be developing it between the, some of the neighbors know ETI and vice versa. And we're trying to facilitate a partnership between them. And for lack of a word, whatever that means, whether a sub, you know, a sub corral of them or whatever it is. So someone can take responsibility for the corral.
Okay. Last year, we actually had a application before us actually with regard to a property on the other side of Combs near the park. And we were really excited actually to hear that you were coming up with these plans. But it kind of raises a concept now in my mind, the parking now that takes place near that park is actually on Combs at the very end. Is that not going to be allowed?
That would be, we have had discussions with Mr. Tony regarding that. And we have proposed to him and we've had, worked with, partnered on the city on it, a reciprocal access agreement because that's his, that's his property. But in order for him to access his, his home at the end, he would have to swing up onto our property. So right now that's on, that's, for his review, he's got our draft agreement that we have for reciprocal easement.
Okay, so that's something that's been discussed that may come later on that might provide more potential spaces or?
Correct.
How many more spaces would there be maybe?
Again, it would be his land, so I can't, I can't speak for him of what his plans are for doing. But I know just, just in my opinion of what Mr. Tony's feelings are about that, that he would kind of leave it as is. Because the residents who live on the south side of Combs have been enjoying parking on the north side of Combs for a long time. And when we did design and develop the park, we purposely moved, moved back a little bit so that it could continue. We didn't want to build right up to the, right up to the roadway.
Okay. And again, just personally, I want to say thank you for all the great projects you've done. And again, I really am very excited for this project and thank you for...
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Commissioner Bus?
He brought up the equestrian thing, so I have one more question.
Okay. You only get one chance, right?
So, yeah. I'm sorry, taking liberties here. So with the equestrian, would it be basically a round pen like it is up at Flores then?
Correct.
Okay, so that's, that's what we're talking about. I was curious.
Just so they could turn them out and then...
And just let them loose and exercise them. Okay, copy that. Thank you.
Are there questions over here? Commissioner?
Thanks for your presentation. I may have missed it, apologies if I did, but, but do you have an estimated construction time for the whole project?
Forgot to mention it. From start to finish, we're looking probably about eight months or so, eight to nine months. And just need some money and I'd be okay. So if you, you guys want to fork over $4 million or so, we can get started.
Well, on the money part, I mean, is there, is there, are there funds set aside in a particular budget?
We do, we do have some money. This is also, if you're familiar with Quimby fees, I'm assuming. This project is also part in the same planning area as the T.O. Boulevard specific plan. So what I, when we started this process two, three years ago, I didn't want to, you know, wait until the Quimby fees came then go, okay, now let's start designing. And then it'd be two or three years later and the people would already be into their, into their homes. Now it's to say, hey, let's get this going. Got this project on the shelf. We're ready to go. We've, we've applied for multiple grants and help with the city of Thousand Oaks has helped us on a lot of that. Unfortunately, the first two we've been unsuccessful with, and we've got another one in the hopper right now. Crossing our fingers on that one. And then said with the Quimby fees. So we're hoping to cobble together some money in the next year or two so we can get started with this project.
Anything we can do to support that? Please let us know.
Okay, I mean, 20 bucks, 40 bucks, whatever.
I don't know how much of a swing set 20 bucks buys, but...
It's a start. It's just, just give me a blank check.
Have to start somewhere. Great. Thanks very much.
Sure.
Any other questions?
Sure, I'll make a quick comment. Tom Hare, I had a pleasure meeting you during the Caneo Leadership Program.
Okay.
And gave a great tour of the site and your other parks in the district. So thank you for your service.
Sure, appreciate it.
I think it's a great project, something that's needed for this community. I had a small question regarding agency permitting with Army Corps and CDFW regarding the watershed and the jurisdictional waters that run along Combs Avenue. I know, is there any crossings during that creek that require any agency permitting?
No.
So no, no bridges, no trails over that area?
No.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Has that brought up any more questions? Okay, at that point, I guess you're done for now. You will have a five-minute rebuttal at the end of public comments.
Thank you.
Now we go to public comments. You will need to fill out a speaker card if you'd like to say something about the project. Right now we have one. Each speaker has five minutes and at the time, you come up, say your name and city of residence. So the one speaker card would be Rory Trujillo.
Hello, everybody. My name is Rory Trujillo. I live on Combs Avenue, 794 Combs, which is east of the Page Lane. And I've been there for over 17 years. I have a concern. And the concern is where the intersection is where Combs and Page Lane is. At that location, they're going to have the equestrian and the pedestrian cross on Page Lane. And I've seen a lot of issues over the years in that area. And Page Lane has been a major through affair to get from one side of the 23 freeway where the people live and back on the other side to get into downtown. And they go very, very fast through that section. There's a two-way stop, stop signs. And I believe a four-way stop is required. Because I'm afraid due to the speed that some of these people are traveling, that if somebody crosses or a horse crosses, there could be somebody injured or killed. Because they do not slow down till they get about 30 yards past Combs on Page Lane where the speed bumps are. That's when they start braking. So when they go through that intersection, they're going more than 35 miles an hour. Sometimes I see them going 50 or 60. And we've had issues where people have run off that road, who couldn't make the turn around, the bend going under the 23 overpass. And we, recently we had a home on a corner there on the west side of Page Lane where his fence was taken out. Somebody was going through the section because they don't have a stop sign. The stop sign goes east and west. There's no stop signs going north and south on Page. So if we're going to... So if we're going to have a crosswalk there, I really believe that a four-way stop is needed. One, for the safety of the public, and two, to slow these motorists down. Because they fly through there, and I've seen it over the years, many, many times. So if you need to do a study, I think you guys should do that. Granted, it's not a real busy place late at night, but going to work, you know, people coming home rush hour, and on the weekends, when most of the people will be using the park, I'm concerned. It's just a very safety, it's a safety concern that I think the city should really take a look at, because I know the park district has no control over that.
Thank you.
I just wanted to touch base with the gentleman on the end was talking about. I was kind of getting the same feeling he was saying.
I do have a question. There is a box on your speaker card, whether you are in favor, or a box if you are opposed. Did you want to check either of those boxes or just leave them both empty?
I'll just leave them open. I'm for the park. It's just that little area where they're at, the intersection, that I think it could be a major safety concern for the public.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any questions of our speaker? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's the end of our speakers. So staff, do you have any follow-up comments?
Just response to the speaker. Staff will continue to monitor that intersection. We follow Caltrans warrants for installation of stop signs. And as that intersection meets warrants, the city, of course, would install stop signs as needed. But we'll continue to monitor, especially after the park goes in, to make sure if there's a stop sign warranted, it would be installed.
Thank you. Yes.
So my understanding is, we don't determine whether or not a stop sign goes in there? Is that what you're saying?
No. The Caltrans has what we call warrants or standards for when you can install a stop sign, and it's based on many different criteria.
But is that a guideline or is that a rule?
It's a, it's a rule. We follow it because it keeps us legally safe.
Okay. So we cannot over?
I would say you can't. It's possible the city council could.
I mean, the city. I use the royal we, I apologize.
But it would be staff's recommendation, the city council, whether or not to install one.
Copy that, thank you.
Are there any other questions of staff? Any other comments from staff? Okay. That means, Mr. Herr, you have five minutes if you'd like to come back up.
Not much else to say, but I would defer to City Public Works regarding the stop sign. That's it.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. At this point, I guess we should close the public hearing. If there are nothing else, okay. And now I open up the floor for a motion and/or discussion. Mr. Newman?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm very pleased to support this project. I also want to thank Mr. Trujillo for coming to Voices Concerns and to say I share your concerns. I ride my bike through this area multiple times a week, including today. On my bike, I can go in excess of thirty miles an hour through Page Lane coming from Caneo Oaks. So certainly, traffic can be a concern. I haven't had any problems in close to twenty years of riding through there, but I'm not there all the time as you are. So I'm glad to hear that the city will be monitoring this. But with that one caveat, I think that the overall project as presented is terrific. And I'm very happy to see what's been an empty lot for many, many years turned into a real great resource for the community that makes life better, as Mr. Herr said. So with that, I will move that we adopt the resolution recommending to the city council the approval of Z 2019-7298, DP 2019-7291, OTP 2019-7292, PMW 2019-7293, and MND 2019-7309, based on the findings.
And subject to the conditions contained in the resolution?
Yes, that too.
Does he need to press the motion button? He did, okay. All right, are there any comments, Commissioner?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I also will support the motion. I appreciate the application, all the time and effort that went into it. It's actually great use and great plan and design. Mr. Trujillo does raise a very valid and important point. I'm assuming, Mr. Trujillo, you know that we're here to listen. If at any point in time you see issues, please let us know. Obviously, it's important. I've been through the area many, many times, lived in the area, and haven't seen the kind of traffic that you've seen in terms of that kind of issue, but it's obviously an important issue, especially with more people using the park. But again, I strongly support the motion and will vote in favor of it.
Anyone else? Commissioner?
I love the park. I love the idea of the park. Like I said, Mr. Herr, I think that it's in a great location and will serve a very, a part of the community that I feel like is underserved by the amount of parkland we have. But I do share Mr. Trujillo's concern. I am very familiar with that neck of the woods. I lived very close to there for a long time. And I, as Mr. Trujillo has mentioned, have seen people drive in excess of sixty miles an hour there numerous times. I have seen parts of cars from people who unsuccessfully tried to navigate that part of the street multiple times in my life. And so I love the idea, I wish I had thought of it, of putting a stop sign there at Combs and Page Lane, just to encourage people to slow down. I think that that would be a benefit to the people that live in that neighborhood as well, because it may discourage people from using that quite as much as they used to. But the paramount thing for me is the safety of the people who are in that park, some of whom will be children, and for the equestrian people who will be using that part of the area. I do have one friend who lost a horse very close to there from a car accident, so I am familiar with the dangers of these things. And I think that's something that, if we can put it in there to encourage the city council or the city to consider, I would love to put that in.
Commissioner?
A procedural question on that point. If it's the will of the commission to add the recommendation that Commissioner Buss has offered, do I need to withdraw the motion and then reintroduce it? Or how do we go about adding a recommendation that there be a four-way stop sign?
Before we do that, I'm not sure I would want to do that, because I'm not sure, coming from the Traffic Commission, I'm not sure that that's the right procedure to just throw in a stop sign.
There may well be a jurisdictional issue that, we're about land use, not about traffic.
If I may.
I take, I take that point very clearly and want to respect traffic staff and the Traffic Commission and their jurisdiction on that. But does that, does that prevent us from making recommendations to the bodies that do make these decisions?
So the quick answer is, my recommendation would be not to add a condition, certainly because this is about, this matter before you is about the park itself, not about traffic that's unrelated to CRPD's jurisdiction, as Mr. Herr mentioned during his presentation. We've certainly, as staff, heard your comments from all the planning commissioners tonight about concerns about this area. And certainly, we know that Public Works is monitoring this, and you heard that statement today from staff on that issue. So my recommendation would be not to try to add anything on that. As far as recommendations to look at something, I think it would be more generated to staff to ask, not on this project, because again, this project's really separate from the street issue as far as traffic controls and devices and warrants that might be required or needed to be evaluated before you look at something like that.
As a follow-up, though, I mean, we're making a recommendation about this project to the city council, and part of the substance of this hearing involves questions that have been raised by commissioners, by citizens about traffic. It's out of the jurisdiction of this body, that's not, that's, there's no question about that. But is there a way of capturing that concern without necessarily conditioning the project?
So I think the way that's captured is to direct staff to look into that issue as far as the location. Again, the recommendation tonight has to do with the project itself, and so your recommendation, even conditional, would be to say, would be, have to be related to this project itself with the recommendation to council, which is what we have tonight. As far as the concern about this location, it would be to direct staff to look into this. You can certainly make a comment, and you can do this in different ways. You don't have to do it in an order or a resolution of this, from this body. In that procedure or that process, it would be something more, hey, let's take a look at this. And certainly, you're welcome to direct staff to take action, to look at this in a little more detail if you want. But as far as something related to this motion for this project, my recommendation would be not to add anything.
All right, thank you. Maybe we can come back to this during Commissioner's comments then. Thank you.
Are there any other comments? I think that that would be a really good idea, is to ask staff at another part of our meeting to look at this.
I won't forget.
None of us will. Okay, so will the secretary please prepare us for a vote?
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. And just a quick comment, Mr. Herr. I'm a neighbor of the neighborhood park at Banyan, and I was actually, I was actually on the committee that you all asked to give advice, and I'm really pleased with the results. You listened to us, and it's wonderful. So thank you for that also. Okay. So I guess we're ready to move on to, let's see, item 7B. Okay. Will the clerk please open the public hearing?
Hearing advertised as required by law is hereby open to consider agenda item 7B, case number VTTM 2016-70458, to allow approval of a vesting tentative tract map, VTTM, to subdivide a 0.38, a 0.38-acre lot for the conversion of a vacant six-unit apartment building to townhomes, townhome units associated with VTTM 2016-70458, located at 3236 Royal Oaks Drive. The applicant is Summit Design and Construction Incorporated.
Thank you. And Senior Planner, Kristen Rice, once again?
Yes, thank you. The proposed project before you tonight includes a request for approval of a vesting tentative tract map to subdivide a 0.38-acre lot for the conversion of a six-unit apartment building to townhome units. And please note that no additional constructed is being, construction is being requested. The subject site is located at 3236 Royal Oaks Drive, which is immediately north of the 101 freeway and south of Hampshire Road. The subject property is located within the Model Oaks Neighborhood Improvement Program area, which is bounded by the 101 freeway, Hampshire Road, and Los Robles Road. The project site is currently zoned residential plan development and has a land use designation of medium-density residential, which allows for up to fifteen dwelling units per acre. The subject site is 0.3-acre lot, and it is relatively flat with several large oak trees. The immediate vicinity is a rather eclectic community and contains single-family homes and apartments. In fact, there is currently a four-unit apartment complex being constructed right across the street. The Model Oaks Neighborhood Improvement Program area allows for administrative processing of projects involving the construction of six or less residential apartment units as a minor modification, and any request for construction of four or less townhome units is also administratively processed. However, planning commission review and approval is required for the subdivision of property into five or more residential lots. And because this request involves the subdivision into seven parcels, planning commission review and approval is required. In May of 2017, a minor modification oak tree permit and landmark tree permit were approved administratively to allow for the construction of six apartment units and additional encroachment into the protected zone of oak trees. Following that administrative approval, the applicant requested to modify the approved permits to allow for the construction of six townhomes. According to the applicant, the initial project was designed in a manner which also met the minimum code requirements for a multifamily townhome project. And at this time, the subject six-unit building has been constructed, but has neither received final building permits nor has been occupied. The following slides contain photographs of the subject site with the constructed building. This is a view looking south towards the constructed building, and I'm standing on Royal Oaks Drive. This is a view looking towards the north, towards Royal Oaks. I'm standing at the very rear portion of the property. What you're looking at is the backside of the townhome units. This, again, I'm standing in the rear portion of the property, at the back property line, looking northeast. And from this point, I'm on the other side of the rear property line, looking north. This is where the entrances are to each of the units. This is the map proposed for the project. The applicant proposes fee simple ownership of each exclusive use area where the homeowner will own the building and the airspace within the individual exclusive use area, which includes the patios and the balcony areas, and an undivided interest in all common areas. The proposed subdivision has been designed to comply with all city standards for subdivisions and the applicable development standards, and the proposed map has been reviewed for compliance by the city's Public Works Department. As I mentioned, the proposed project complies with all applicable sections of the Thousand Oaks Municipal Code and also the Model Oaks Neighborhood Improvement Program area, which allows for flexible development standards for properties located in the RPD zone, including setbacks, height, private usable open space, and parking, which were discussed more in detail in the staff report. Per the Thousand Oaks Municipal Code requirements, the subject building has been constructed with separate meters for gas, electricity, and water for each dwelling unit, allowing individual billing for each unit. Public utility easements will be provided to the city for wastewater and sewer. And again, the map was reviewed by the Public Works Department. The project has been reviewed in conformance with CEQA pursuant to Class 1, Section 15301, existing facilities. It is categorically exempt because the project involves no expansion of the existing or former use, and the proposed division of existing multiple-family residences will be in common interest ownership where no physical changes are being proposed. I also want to point out that none of the six exemptions to the use of the categorical exemptions apply. The Thousand Oaks Municipal Code requires the following findings to be met to approve the proposed project. The finding includes that the proposed map and design of the subdivision is consistent with the general plan. In this particular case, the general land use, the general plan land use designation is medium-density residential, which is intended for residential uses. The site is physically suitable for the type and proposed density of development. The subject site is currently developed with a vacant six-unit apartment building, associated parking areas, landscaping, and utilities, and is surrounded by similar residential uses, which is why the project meets this finding. The project will not cause substantial environmental damage. The project will not cause substantial environmental damage because the site is already developed and the proposed project merely involves the conversion of the existing building into, from apartments into townhomes. The next finding is that subdivision is not likely to cause public health problems. As I mentioned, the site is already developed and the previous project was reviewed by the city's Engineering Division, Traffic Division, Building and Safety, and the Ventura County Fire Department. And no public health problems are anticipated. Also, there are no public easements that will be in conflict for access through the property. And lastly, as I mentioned on the last slide, the project has been reviewed in conformance with CEQA. In conclusion, staff concludes that the project complies with required city standards for subdivisions and complies with all applicable Thousand Oaks Municipal Code and Model Oaks Neighborhood Improvement Plan area requirements. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission approve the vesting tentative tract map 2016-70458 based on the findings and subject to the conditions in the resolution. And I don't know why I was so excited to point out my mistake the last time, but now that we're at this project, I can point it out this time. The header for the resolution for this particular project stated Community Development Department Resolution VTM, and that will be changed to VT, VTTM. That concludes my presentation and I'm available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions, Commissioner?
Again, thank you for that presentation. Let me begin with a couple of terminology questions. Does the term "townhome" have a specific definition for regulatory purposes as distinct
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Mohamed Fatimi. I'm Division Manager for Engineering Services and Public Works. The term "townhome" actually is a name for a type of structure and has no bearing on ownership and type of ownership. Basically, the types of ownership you have is either by fee or by condominium ownership, or it could be like a lease or easement.
All right. So for purposes of our discussion, am I inferring from your answer correctly that there are no differences between, in terms of regulatory requirements, between a townhome and an apartment?
Correct. Absolutely, no. Yes.
Okay, great. There are differences in upkeep of common areas between an apartment and a townhome if it's a condominium arrangement, correct?
Depends on the ownership and how the HOA has been proposed and how the CCNR is written. It all depends on how the attorneys come up with the maintenance and how to do all that work. Even the ownership of the common is based on how it's been divided in this.
How the owner decides.
Condominium plans.
Yes, yes. So I'm not sure if you can answer this, or perhaps this is a question for the applicant. But I'm wondering about maintenance of two trees in particular on this, walking this lot. I saw, first of all, in the photos that Ms. Rice took, there's a very large oak tree whose branches dropped down onto the neighboring property, almost to the point where they would impede cars from parking there. So I'm wondering if the, who would be responsible for the upkeep of that tree, which is on this property?
It would be spelled out in the CCNRs, which the draft CCNRs have been submitted and are currently being reviewed by the city Attorney's Office.
Okay, I'll ask the applicant that question then as well. And I gather probably the same answer would apply to my other, the other tree I wanted to ask about, which is there's a large eucalyptus tree that's off-site between this property and the 101. It appears that it's been pruned so that there are no branches overhanging this property, but eucalyptuses are pretty notorious garbage trees in terms of shedding like crazy and also not being very compostable, if that's a word. So I'm wondering again about who's responsible for cleaning up the mess from the eucalyptus tree. Is that, is that again, something that would be covered in the CCNRs?
Yes.
All right. That's all I have. Thank you.
Commissioners, anybody else have any questions?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Ms. Rice, for your presentation. Just one question. Did you get any comments from neighbors as to the application?
I did get one phone call from a neighbor that was concerned about taking apartment rental units off the market.
That was just more of a generalized concept. Okay, and that was the only comment you got?
That was the only comment.
Thank you.
Commissioner?
I just, thank you very much for your presentation, Ms. Rice. I just have a couple of questions about the timeline for the, for the project itself. So it was originally built as an apartment complex, and do you know when that construction was completed?
I do not. It was probably before I started. But they are constructed now, but they have not received occupancy, so I would assume that they have, it's been fairly recent.
So they have not gotten a certificate of occupancy for these?
Correct.
Okay. I was curious if they had attempted to rent, but I was going to ask them that. And so, so this application for the change came in, when did that, when was that initiated?
After the administrative approvals were given.
Perfect. Thank you very much. No more questions.
Are there any other questions, Commissioners? Okay. So now it's time for the applicant to speak. Is it, let's see, questions only. I have four speaker cards and they all say questions only. Oh, here. They all say questions only. Please state your name and city of residence.
I'm a resident here of Thousand Oaks and I'm here on behalf of the applicant's summit, construction and design. The applicant is here, Arnold Tadavuzian. We have our architect, Tom Oswald, civil engineer, Don Waite. And so we're here to answer any of your, any particular questions. I also wanted to congratulate Kristen for coming here to Thousand Oaks. We really appreciate your hard work in helping move this application. It sat kind of dormant for a little while. I heard the questions that were asked. We are conditioned to produce CCNRs that address maintenance of all kinds of different things on the property, particularly including the oak trees, the eucalyptus trees. And those will be handled through an association that's been formed already. The CCNRs are with the city Attorney's Office for review. They'll be looked at by Patrick's office. They'll also be looked at by Community Development and possibly even Public Works because there are certain things that they're going to be interested in. The question about timeline from Commissioner Bus, the application for the conversion was about seven months ago. The project was just recently finished being constructed. So we're kind of in a holding pattern right now until the, this approval goes forward, hoping that it does tonight. And then we can then handle the plan checking of the map and then, and then go through the Bureau of Real Estate, through the State of California to have the ability to then actually sell the units. So that's, that's kind of some background on the timeline and when we file and what comes, what we hope to come next. So I'm here to respond to any of the questions you might have.
Questions, anybody? Commissioner?
So my understanding is this was originally built as it was going to be an apartment complex. That was going to be, did you have a property management company lined up and all that stuff? And you changed your mind midstream? I want to know what the line of thinking was in changing this from rental to a sale?
It was. And the owner is here to talk more about that if we wish, but I think it was really just an economics decision that the marketplace now is ripe for sale product and that's the direction that he wanted to go.
And the only reason I ask is because obviously it would have been limited to four units if you had initially put in this project for a purchase. So it kind of looks like you backdoored yourself into two extra units. On paper, and I'm, that's why I'm asking this question. So I'll just be blunt.
I understand.
So was that, was that the consideration or was there a plan to actually write these out initially?
No, the plan was originally to have apartment units and the, it wasn't that we were denied the ability to have six units versus four. The Planning Commission is required to evaluate projects where there are more than four units for sale product.
Exactly. And now we're here and you've already built them. That's why I was asking. So I understand.
Got it.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I have a question.
Sure.
There are a few other multifamily buildings on that street. Are any of those townhomes or condos?
I am not sure whether they are or not. I'm looking to our project team. There are some.
There are some. So this wouldn't be.
This isn't standing out as a.
It's not going to stand out.
One of a kind.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, guess that's it.
Thank you.
All right. And we do not have any public comment speakers unless I've missed somebody. Any other questions of staff?
If I may.
Yes.
There was a question from the Commission regarding requirements for tree pruning. And so the general, and I'm going to say this as a, the general, there's always exceptions, but the general is that when you own the tree, it's on your property, you have the responsibility. But when you have branches going off onto someone else's property, that owner certainly has a right to go through a process to trim the tree as deemed fit. With the qualifier for this, of course, is an oak tree is different than a eucalyptus tree as far as our city is reviewing them. So no one can just go and trim an oak tree without getting the proper permits and going through the proper review of that. So that's how you would do it, handle that issue. But typically, any management company is going to be responsible for the common area is going to be responsible for maintaining the landscaping that's been required. And that's something that obviously the tenants are going to want to make sure done. I shouldn't say the tenants, but the owners of those, of those units are going to want to make sure are done because it is something that is going to make the property as far as being responsible for any issue that you have. And once in a while, we do see it in front of Planning Commission where there's someone who wants to change the tree pallet, for example, in a big complex, and there's HOA involved. And so it's normally the HOA who comes and presents the application for trying to change something due to problems with sidewalks or interference by tree roots, et cetera.
I appreciate that, if I may. I really was more about the, who bears the financial burden rather than the process for doing it. And if I understand correctly, both from the applicant's response and yours, is that if this were an apartment, the financial burden would be on the apartment owner. And here it's shifting to the HOA or whatever group of homeowners or property owners would be under this townhome arrangement.
Right. And so that's why I went to the general rule because there's always going to be exceptions. And one of the exceptions you have is, and I don't want to get too much into this, but you have issues where someone wants that a tree, a branch is on their property, for example, and they want to trim it even though the tree, the trunk is not on their property. And so they trim it in a way that actually damages the tree, then they could be liable or responsible. So normally, it's a cooperative thing is what we obviously try to deal with. We want to make it cooperative where the tree is, from someone's property is damaging somebody's property, there's obviously a cause of action there possibly. So there's always this effort to do cooperation and come with a holistic view of trimming the tree if it's necessary.
I actually have a question for you, Kelvin. The discrepancy between the number of units permissible per, based on acreage for rental versus, versus sale, has that been in place for a long time in the city? Is that, is that something that we're, that we're looking at? Is that something that needs to be corrected?
It's something that we'll take a look at, just given the, sort of this case being more the exception than the rule.
I was going to say, has this come up before?
Yeah, this is not something that comes up very often, but when something like this does present itself, it's something that we have to take a closer look at instead.
Perfect, okay. Because, because I, and I don't mean to disparage, it's a beautiful project. I think it's gorgeous and, but I was just curious how this process works. So thank you.
Any other questions from the Commissioners? Okay, so you, the applicant is entitled to 15 minutes. You only took two. And you're also entitled to five minutes at this point. You're going to waive. Okay, thank you. All right. I will now open the, let's close the public hearing. I will open up the floor for a motion and/or discussion.
I would like to.
You do need to push the motion button and the speaker button.
I did, oh, there we go, speaker. There we go. All right. So I would like to make a motion to allow approval of a vesting tentative tract map, VTTM, to subdivide a 0.38 acre lot for the conversion of a vacant six-unit apartment building to townhome units associated with VTTM 2016-7458.
Are there any comments, discussion? Okay, can you prepare us for a vote, please?
Motion carries 5-0.
Okay, thank you. Does the Commission want to take a break before we move to 7C or do you want to just plow on through? Plow on through? Okay. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. I did not, I did not pass these out. I got them after we had taken the vote on 7A. There are two statement cards. I didn't want to confuse everybody during 7B, but we did have two statement cards in favor of 7A that we got after the vote. Okay, so are we ready? Will the clerk please open the public hearing for 7C?
Hearing advertised as required by law is hereby open to consider agenda item 7C, case number HPD 2018-70726, to allow grading within natural sloping terrain greater than 25% gradient in conjunction with the construction of a two-story, single-family dwelling, including three development waivers. Number one, a proposed driveway in excess of 7% gradient. Number two, reduced top-of-slope building setback. And number three, retaining wall height located at 612 Lone Oak Drive. The applicant is Jonathan Friedman.
Thank you. And we have Associate Planner Carlos Contreras.
Chair, if I may, before Carlos begins, I just want to take the opportunity to introduce Carlos to the Planning Commission. Carlos just recently joined us from nearby city of Malibu. Carlos has been with us for approximately two months. And like Kristen before him, he jumped in with both feet and this is one of the first cases he was assigned. So this is his first opportunity to present before this illustrious board this evening. And with that, I'll turn it over to Carlos, who'll begin his presentation.
Welcome.
Good evening, Chair, members of the, good evening, Chair, members of the Planning Commission. The project before you tonight is HPD 18-70726, located at 612 Lone Oak Drive. The proposed project is a request to allow grading within natural sloping terrain greater than 25% gradient. The request includes the construction of a new two-story, single-family residence. And the project also includes three development waivers. One is for the driveway in excess of a 7% grade. Also, the reduction of the top-of-slope building setbacks and also an increase to the retaining wall height of three feet to six feet. Here's a vicinity map of the project site. It's located north of Hillcrest Drive and just to the east of Herb's Road. It's located north of Hillcrest Drive and just to the east of Herb's Road. Here's the aerial photograph of the subject property. The property is located at the northeast area of the terminus of Lone Oak Drive. As this aerial photograph demonstrates, the subject site is a vacant 4.72 acre parcel and located within a substantially developed residential neighborhood. Adjacent land uses consist of single-family residences. A trail bisects the subject property, and the site topography consists of an ascending slope from Lone Oak Drive. The subject property is one of the last remaining vacant lots on Lone Oak. With regard to background on the proposed project, in May 6 of 1991, the planning commission approved HPD 89-66 and Land Division 614 for the subdivision of the subject property into two lots, and also for the construction of two single-family residences. The current application is for a single-family home, and there's a reduction in the amount of land, sorry, grading, and also in the amount of encroachment into slopes over 25% when you compare it to the original approval in the eighties. With regards to the project details, the proposed residence totals 4,127 square feet in area, and there will be associated development with the single-family home, which includes grading, new utilities, retaining walls, and landscaping. Here's a photograph of the subject site, looking north towards the property. As you can see, you have the existing Lone Oak Drive road improvements. You have that steep ascending slope towards the northeast and the east of the property. Here's a photograph of the subject property looking to the south. You have the existing ascending grade of the slope where the proposed home will be plotted on the property. You will have a retaining wall that will be located at the bottom of that slope there. There will be a three-foot setback, a six-foot retaining wall, and then the manufactured slope beyond. Here's the overall site plan of the proposed project. You enter the property from the south, and the proposed development area will be located on the southwestern portion of the project site. The line in red indicates the proposed trail easement. This is the alignment that is only in concept right now. At post-approval, the applicant will be required to work out the trail alignment, the location of the trail alignment with COSCA. Here's the enlarged site plan. As you can see, you enter the property from the southwest. You have the fire department turnaround. You have a driveway access that leads to the pad where the single-family residence is located. The area in yellow is the first-floor portion of the residence. The area in green is the second-story portion. You do have a 200-foot retaining wall that goes along Lone Oak Drive along the western portion of the site. As you can see, the retaining wall tapers at the end towards the fire department turnaround. The subject project will incorporate two-to-one slopes that go from Lone Oak Drive towards the top of the pad. And then east of the existing residence, you have a retaining wall, and then a manufactured slope that won't exceed a two-to-one grade. And the area, the line in dash blue is the area of the slopes that exceed 25%. So everything above that to the north is the area with slopes greater than 25%. As designed, the project meets all development standards, including but not limited to height, setbacks, parking, and usable open space. Here's a floor plan of the proposed project. The first floor includes a three-car garage, a great room, and a master bedroom area. And the second-floor area demonstrated on the right here is the bedrooms, three bedrooms on the second floor. With regards to the extensive evaluation of the proposed project, staff went ahead and evaluated the encroachment into slopes greater than 25%. The exhibit here demonstrates the areas of the site that exceed a 25% gradient. The area in blue exceeds 25% gradient, and the areas in yellow are at 24% gradient. Because the site has an average slope of 29.1%, 77.5% of the property will have to be maintained as natural open space. That's part of the HPD ordinance requirements. As designed, the applicant has proposed 83% of the lot to be maintained in a natural, undisturbed condition. It is important to note that only 4% of the developed area demonstrated in red here will encroach into slopes greater than 25%. Grading on the site is balanced, meaning that there will be no import or export of materials, with the exception of debris materials. The intent of the HPD zone is to reduce grading activities and avoid major landform alterations. The applicant accomplishes this by incorporating retaining walls, locating the building within the flattest portions of the property, and based on the design, the limited amount of grading and open space provided, staff supports the proposed design and grading. With regards to height and setbacks, the area in green here demonstrates the portion of the residence that is at 29 feet in height to accommodate the second floor. The area in orange demonstrates the remaining single-story portion of the residence at 19.5 feet in height. Building heights in the HPD zone are limited to 25 feet unless each side yard is increased. The two-story home requires a minimum 10-foot setback, and the proposed building setback is 29 feet for the side yard, and also a side yard of 827 feet to the north. The front and rear yards had to be a minimum of 20 feet. The proposed project does provide a 52.6-foot front yard setback for the first floor, and then also a 65-foot setback for the second floor. These setbacks are from Lone Oak. The hillside guidelines require a 25-foot setback for the first floor from the top of the slope. The proposed project provides a 19-foot setback, as demonstrated here. The second-story portion of the residence requires a 35-foot setback, and this is proposing a 25-foot setback. As previously mentioned, the minimum front yard setback provided to the street is 52 feet approximately, and as such, a reduced slope setback can be supported. With regards to the driveway design, the applicant is requesting to install a driveway that exceeds the maximum allowable of 7%. The applicant is proposing a direct access opposed to a meandering access, which would require more grading. As shown here, the fire department turnaround provides a driveway gradient of 5% for 32 feet, demonstrated in red, and then transitions to 15% in the central portion, which extends 70 feet. And then you have a 10% grade for 50 feet, demonstrated in the green as it leads to the pad. The proposed configuration is intended to reduce the development footprint and minimize grading and slope impacts. The driveway design in concept has been reviewed and approved by the Public Works Department and Ventura County Fire Department. With regards to the brush clearance, a minimum of 100 feet has to be cleared from the proposed structure. Being that the proposed residence is located closer than 100 feet to the east property line, an encroachment will be required on the adjacent property to the east. The applicant will be required to provide to staff a notice of license agreement with the adjoining property owner to perform the required annual brush clearance. The applicant and the adjacent property owner have agreed to this requirement. With regards to the retaining wall, the project does include a six-foot tall retaining wall. The code allows for a maximum of three feet in height. The wall will be 240 feet long and will provide a three-foot setback from the street, as shown in this cross-section AA here. The purpose of the wall is to retain the hillside, minimize manufactured slope gradient, and prevent the home from being shifted further to the east. Aesthetic impacts will be minimized because landscaping will be incorporated within the three-foot setback, and manufactured slopes will also be providing enhanced landscaping. Furthermore, the wall will not be obstructing any kind of vehicle pedestrian site visibility, and the wall is located approximately 20 feet north of the entrance to the property. So that's how staff determine that there won't be any issues with site visibility. With regards to the trail, the subject site will be required to provide an easement to COSCA for a trail improvement in the future. There is an existing trail located to the east, the Glider Hill Trail. The purpose of the easement and the improvements for the trail is to provide connectivity to that Glider Hill Trail. The trail has been on the subject property due to human encroachment. People have crossed through that property for years now. Here's an aerial photograph of the neighborhood. Shows you that Herb's Road is approximately 620 feet to the west of the subject property. The arrow in red demonstrates the siding of the proposed residence. The trail is with the arrow in green, that's the Glider Hill Trail to the east, and you have the steep slopes to the north and northeast of where the proposed residence is to be sited. Here are the elevations for the proposed project. The west elevation faces Lone Oak Drive. It provides for varied roof lines, gable roofing. It provides for decorative window trim with hardy panel siding, as well for the south-facing entry. Here's the east elevation that will be provided, that's facing towards the steep slopes. There's an interior courtyard area. Again, you have varied roof lines and different building materials provided. The north elevation is the elevation that will be facing towards the proposed trail. The applicant did provide for horizontal variation of materials, hardy panel materials, decorative trim on the windows, and varied roof lines to further reduce any kind of aesthetic impacts. The proposed home utilizes split-level design with a second-floor element consistent with other homes in the area. The proposed building incorporates varied roof elements and horizontal and vertical interest. Materials for the building include composite asphalt shingle roofing with metal accents, hardy panel vertical siding, and windows with decorative trim. Here's an example of the proposed architecture that will be utilized for the residence. Here's a conceptual landscape plan. You can see from Lone Oak up the manufactured slope toward the proposed single-family residence, you're going to have some landscaping that is required per the hillside ordinance. And you're also going to have landscaping that's going to create a buffer between the landscaping, sorry, the retaining wall and landscaping from Lone Oak Drive. The photograph on the bottom demonstrates the elevation as you see it from Lone Oak Drive. You see there's a retaining wall there that will have enhanced landscaping. You have the manufactured slope. As the slope ascends, you have the required landscaping with the proposed residence at the top of the slope. With regards to the planning commission review on the project before the planning commission tonight, because the proposed project includes grading activities and the construction of a single-family residence on slopes that are greater than 25%, a key function of the hillside ordinance is to preserve the natural terrain and aesthetic character. Another reason why the project is before the planning commission tonight is because the proposed project encroaches into slopes, natural terrain exceeding 25%, and that is a requirement under section 7-3.07 for grading requirements, which is why the project is here before you. With regards to the waivers, the applicant is requesting to provide for a 15% maximum driveway gradient. Staff feels that they can support the proposed driveway access because it meets all the public works standards and requirements. The design concept has been approved by Public Works and the Ventura County Fire Department, and an alternative design would require additional grading, and that doesn't meet the intent of the hillside HPD ordinance. With regards to the top of the slope, reduction in setbacks, staff supports the proposed waiver in that the project will not create a tunnel effect. The proposed project reduces the amount of grading into slopes that exceed 25%, and visual impacts have been minimized because the proposed project includes a 52.6 setback from the street. With regards to the retaining wall, staff supports the proposed waiver in that the retaining wall is necessary to retain the hillside, minimize the amount of grading on manufactured, sorry, minimize the amount of grading into slopes deeper than 25%, minimize the amount of manufactured slopes on the property. The proposed wall does not obstruct any vehicle pedestrian visibility, and the proposed project, as designed, incorporates a wall that provides enhanced building materials and landscaping. The proposed project has been found to be exempt from CECL guidelines. The categorical exemption is Class 3, Section 15303 A&E for new construction, in that the construction includes the construction of a single-family residence and associated accessory development in a residential zone, and none of the six exceptions apply. Before staff concludes, staff did provide a supplemental memorandum to the planning commission to make a modification to condition number 21, requiring that the proposed project include manufactured slopes that do not exceed a maximum height of 25 feet, as required under municipal code section 7-3.19. With that being said, the proposed project is supported by staff in that, you know, the encroachment to 25% terrain is unavoidable. Location of the residence minimizes impact to natural landforms. The design minimizes visual impacts to surrounding properties, and waivers meet the intent of the HPD standards. Staff recommends that the planning commission approve HPD 2018-7026 based on the findings and subject to the conditions of approval. That concludes staff's presentation. I'm available for any questions.
Commissioner Lanson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Contreras, and welcome. Thank you for your presentation, very informative. Is it possible that somebody can put up attachment 3, which is the aerial photograph with the red line overlay over it? Almost there. There it is. I want to make sure I'm focusing on the specific trail that we're focusing on. So I see two lines that are crossing the property. One is a straight line, and one is kind of a more diagonal line. Which is the trail that's going to be preserved?
We don't have the, we don't have the actual trail alignment right now. It's only in concept. If the project is approved by the planning commission tonight, at post-approval, before the applicant obtains building permits, the applicant will have to coordinate with COSCA and the community development department to establish that alignment. At this point now, we don't know whether the alignment could be 200 feet away from the proposed residence or 250 feet away. We don't know if it's a southern trail bisecting the property or the one that you mentioned to the north.
Okay, so that's something to be determined as part of the discussion. Who owns the property that is directly east of the property?
That property is owned by an HOA. That came from the original development on Parmenter to the northeast. The HOA owns it and maintains that open space area as part of the approval of that development.
And is there any requirement as part of this process that the HOA be given access through Lone Oak, or how else are they accessing it?
Under that, under that development approval, staff did not find any kind of requirement for connectivity to Lone Oak from that proposed development. In fact, that whole area that they own there is to be designated and preserved as open space.
And my understanding from the presentation is the remainder of the property in red, aside from what's being used for the purposes of the property, will also remain open space, correct?
Yeah. Outside of where the proposed building pad is going to be located, the applicant is required to provide 77.5% of that area to the north as open space. As designed right now, the applicant is providing approximately 83% of open space area to the north of the proposed residence.
Okay. And I noticed in the materials, there were three letters, emails, notes from neighbors that I believe were in support of the project. Did you get any other neighborhood or community comments aside from the three that were attached to the materials?
I did have an individual neighboring resident come to the public counter today to inquire about the project. The applicant was, sorry, the resident was not objecting to the proposed project or in support of it. She merely came in to inquire about the proposed development, what type of grading was going to be proposed, how many stories of proposed residence would provide, the setbacks, and also she asked questions regarding the trail. That's all she had.
Great, that's a lot of questions. Anyway, thank you, I have nothing further.
Yes, I'm going to step in while you still have that attachment up. I was also curious about the trail because it looks like it may need to go through, which means you need a break in the retaining wall? Or is this just trail just going to be a loop, and it never goes out to Lone Oak?
So Lone Oak at the terminus will have an area where you don't have any improvements beyond that existing dead end. That trail is to the north of that. So where the proposed development is going to go, it barely goes beyond that terminus of Lone Oak. So in fact, that trail improvement will be north of where the existing road improvements are.
Okay, thank you. Are there questions, Commissioner?
Mr. Contreras, welcome.
Mr. Contreras, welcome, and thank you for your presentation. Are other homes in the area similar in size, about 4,100 square feet? Is that a typical size for homes along Lone Oak or on Parmenter?
Yes, so I did an extensive review and analysis of surrounding properties along Lone Oak, and that's what I stuck with. And there were various homes of the similar size. The average home size was 3,216 square feet. This one proposed here tonight is at 4,127. However, adjacent properties did consist of one-story and two-story single family residences. So it seemed to be compatible with all the neighboring properties with not only the size, but also with the FAR. I did review some of the floor area ratios on surrounding properties, and this project was within the limits of the surrounding properties.
You said the average is 3,000 something. Are there, are there, are there other homes that are, that are in excess of 4,000?
So yeah, on part of my table here, I have a property at 603 Lone Oak is at 4,449 square feet. The property, I don't know the street name, but they are at 4,623.
Okay, so.
To the northwest.
As, as proposed, the square footage here is more or less in line with, with, or similar to other houses in the immediate area. Is that a fair statement?
Yes, it appears that that is the case in this particular project.
All right. In your presentation, the, the slide that had the blue dotted line showing the parts of the property that would be graded because they're in excess of 25%? Yes, this slide. So, so it seems, it seems in this case that the, if I'm reading this correctly, the resident sits on a part of the land that is almost exclusively, not entirely, but almost exclusively currently in excess of 25% grade. So two questions on that. One, I'm trying to square that with something else you said during, you said that this is located in the flattest portion of the property. And yet, it looks, at least from here, from the blue dotted line, that it's in, this is on, almost entirely on the part that's in excess of 25% grade. Are those two things compatible?
When I mentioned, what I should have clarified is the proposed development area, the footprint, is within the flattest portions. Because that includes, I was talking about the fire department turnaround, the driveway access and the pad that extends to the south.
All of the development.
I should have clarified that, not just the single family. I'm not focusing on the single family home because the applicant is grading this proposed project site to accommodate a residence, whether it's at 4,000 square feet or at 2,000 square feet. It just depends on the sighting of, of the property.
So the flattest part you're talking about in the entire 4.7 acres, you're, and in referring to all of the development work that happens, not just the house, correct?
That's correct, because there are areas, as I have another slide that demonstrated the other areas in the central portions and the northeastern portions that exceed 25%. The applicant is not citing it there. Because with this proposed design, the applicant is providing for the residence to be closer to the street in order to reduce the amount of grading necessary for the proposed driveway access. By extending the driveway access, they'd have to increase the amount of, of grading and also encroach into, into slopes deeper than 25% to the east.
Okay. On, again, referring to this map, it shows that there are substantial portions of the property that are less than 25% grade. Question number one on that is, is there any part of the property where a 4,127 square foot home could be situated without grading? Either with no grading into 25% slope or with less grading into 25% slope?
Now, if the property were to be sited further to the south, below the lines in blue and closer towards Lone Oak Drive, closer, closer towards the southwestern portion of the property, that could be an alternative possibility. However, the reason why that's not the case, and perhaps the applicant can give you more information on that, is because that the driveway access would have to be at a higher grade, exceeding the maximum allowed 15% and not meeting fire requirements and public work standards. So based on, on the current design, this, this driveway will meet the minimum requirements for public work standards for the road grade, oh, sorry, the driveway access grade and also fire department requirements, which is why they're not moving it further to the south.
I understand. So again, looking at the whole project in totality, it requires for this size house that, that the grading be done because of, it would mess up grading in other parts of the development. Okay, so let me ask the same question with regard to a smaller house. I'm not a civil engineer, but just looking, standing on Lone Oak facing south, it appeared to me that there's something close to a pad close to the street. Could a smaller home be, be situated there, again, with, with less grading into 25% or no grading into 25% home, in a 25% grade there?
I didn't, I don't have an evaluation of a project to that alternative, but again, according, according to what my discussions were with Public Works and Fire and the applicant, citing any, any, any residents further to the south would require more grading and the driveway access would just become an issue because it would exceed that 15% maximum gradient. The applicant could probably give you more information as to why that driveway access is an issue with regards to meeting the minimum grade requirements. But as far as I know, this has been the, the best sighting for the property, for the, sorry, for the residence in order to reduce the amount of landform alterations.
What I'm getting at with these questions is our standard for allow, for, for giving waivers to do grading into 25% or greater slopes. The term of art, I think, is reasonable and conformant that a property owner is allowed to do such grading, to get a waiver, if it's, if that's the only way to do reasonable and conformant. And, and by the terms, by the answers you just gave, it seems that that is the only way to achieve that reasonable and conformant standard. My question, and I don't know, Mr. Contreras, whether this is for you or perhaps for Mr. Heer, is whether, if we grant the waiver for grading, I'm not talking about the driveway, I'm just talking about the grading component, are we using that reasonable and conformant standard because it's a 4,100 square foot house and that, and it's reasonable and conformant to expect something that's similar to other houses in the area, which it is? Or are we saying that it's reasonable and conformant to allow grading because any property of any size that's built on this, on this lot would require grading into 25% lot? I'm just wondering what the basis for granting that reasonable and conformant waiver would be?
Yes, it appears that encroaching into slopes greater than 25% on the site are unavoidable. Now, again, if they were to cite the project in a different way, what we've, what we, what we have determined is that they would require, again, further encroachments into the slopes that are over 25% to the east and to the northeast. The reason why we are supporting the actual waiver, though, for the, the excess of gradient on the driveway is because it meets the fire department minimum standards and also public works minimum standards, also meaning the intent of the HPD ordinance in order to reduce the amount of landform alterations.
Right, and I understand the coupling of, of that with the, with your evaluation of the grading requirement. I'm, I'm really honing in more on the meaning of the word unavoidable. And I think, if I'm understanding you correctly, you're saying the view of staff is that grading into 25% slope, given the totality of the project, is unavoidable for any size project that would be done on this lot. It's not that it's a 4,100 square foot, and then if, if Mr. Friedman decided to put up, I'm making up a number here, but if he said the house is 1,500 square feet, well, there's some smaller place we could do that without the grading. That's, that's not it. You're saying, no matter what goes here, that, that grading in the 25% slope is unavoidable, and that's the standard. Is that a fair reading of staff's position here?
The, the evaluation when we were looking at the project, the footprint of the single family portion of the home is about 2,000 square, about 2,900 square feet.
Close to 3,000, yes.
So it's less than the average within the area. So we're looking at comparable home within the vicinity. The two-story obviously adds some more square footage, and that's why you have a larger home than those in the surrounding area. But when we were evaluating the project, we were looking for a house that conformed with the typical home in the area as well as minimizing encroachment within the sloping terrain areas.
Okay, so, so it's considered reasonable, staff is considering it reasonable and conformant because that 2,900 square foot footprint is similar to surrounding homes? That, and that's the standard? Is that, is that a fair reading?
Yeah, there's a number of factors that we looked at, and that's one of them. There's others with limiting the grading activity within the 25% slope in order to accommodate development and access to the site. In order to get to the site and keep a driveway grading under the 25% or under 15% and not encroach further to the east into 25%, we had to cite the home in this location.
Okay, I just, I wanted to better understand the reasoning behind the term unavoidable.
Right.
I'm somewhat allergic to, there is no alternative declarations, but, but I think you've made a well-formed argument to support why this is compatible with, with surrounding homes, number one, and two, given that compatibility, given the totality of the project, you're saying this size pad in this neighborhood would require some encroachment into, into 25% slope?
That is correct, yes.
All right, thank you. Nothing further.
Do we have any other questions of staff?
I just have one question about the trail too, because I'm fascinated by this. So this is a, a trail that was formed by people just naturally occurring on private land, and we're asking that the, that the owner now maintain that trail for public use at this point? And that, that, that's their obligation and as a condition of them building a home on their private property?
If, if I may, Chair, if I may. So when we have trails, we have official trails, and then we have trails that are unofficial that have been made by people using this trail, right?
I'm under the impression this is an unofficial trail.
Correct, but there was a plan to connect this Glider Hill Trail to the property to the west of this location. And so as a condition of granting this approval, he's willing to give a trail easement across his property in a certain section. It might not be where you see the two lines there now.
That's not my question. My question is, is he obligated to, to maintain this trail or is the city taking responsibility for that?
I'm sorry.
How does that work?
If it's, if it becomes an official trail, then what happens is COSCA takes over management of the trail.
Perfect, that, that's all I was asking. Because I was curious if, if he was somehow obligated to, or she.
The condition is, the condition is that he's going to.
Just allocate land.
Allocate it and actually first, in this case, actually kind of grade the trail area. Once they determine, again, it's all about where, how it's going to look, and he has the right to. And he's indicated in the condition as negotiated was to look at where the house is going to be, where it's going to, where it's going to be situated, and then look where the trail should be that makes sense for everybody.
Okay, I'm fascinated because people walk through your backyard, obviously, is.
Right.
By invitation, is, is.
Right, so it might be, that's why I'm saying it might not be exactly where these trails are noted. And so it's going to be just working with COSCA as he's already done.
As long as, as long, I, I understand he's comfortable with that. I was just kind of curious about how that worked.
So just for the record, he, as applicant and staff, included COSCA, the COSCA manager or the COSCA planner, to work with them as far as his trail locations. So that was also part of the discussion when we were reviewing this project.
Perfect, all right, thank you very much.
Are there any other questions? Okay, it's time for the applicant, if you would like to come forward. You have 15 minutes. Please state your name and city of residence.
Hi, my name is Sonia Friedman, I'm a resident of Thousand Oaks. John and I have lived in Thousand Oaks for 19 years in the Caneo Oaks neighborhood. We raised our family here. Our daughter and our son both attended Kalina Middle School and Westlake High School. They've now graduated from college, they've moved out of state and have started their careers. Our son just got married last October, and our daughter is getting married in 12 days. But who's counting? We hike most weekends all around Thousand Oaks. We're really excited to have found a property that has a view of the Caneo Valley. We've designed a home with a downstairs master bedroom that would allow us to age in place. And at the same time, we hope we designed a home that is inviting to our adult children and hopefully grandchildren someday, for them to come and visit and stay with us. We love this area, and we're really excited to build a home on this lot. We believe the proposed modern farmhouse is very fitting with this particular property and will be an attractive addition to the neighborhood. John and I thank the staff for their diligence and your assistance in helping to get us to this point. And now I'll turn it over to my husband. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Chair and fellow commissioners, my name is John Friedman. I'm also presumably a resident with her in Thousand Oaks. So 33 glorious years? Yeah, 33 glorious years. Sonia and I have lived in Thousand Oaks, as she mentioned, for over 19 years, and we've loved every minute of it. Some of you may know that I've, in the home building business, and have built a few projects here in town. Because of that, I have a deep understanding and appreciation that the community has a love and a strong feeling of community sense for our hillsides and our open space. So when I found, when we found this property on one of our hikes, and then we saw it online, I immediately came into planning and asked, what was the story, what was the history? And, excuse me, I was given the application that was approved, as Carlos mentioned back, I think, approved in 81, for the two homes to be constructed on this parcel. We, we looked at that map in, you know, in detail. As I mentioned, it's kind of what I've been doing for years. And we picked the, and the pad we picked is one of the two locations that were shown. The other one, as Carlos had on that other map, is further north. The reason we picked this first location is primarily because of the visibility of the other location. The other location from Erbs is, is 100% visible, kind of, with, with a home up on that, on that location, I think would be very visible. And the location we're at, because of the heavy tree growth from Erbs looking up towards this area, along with the two homes that are across the street from us, both those homes are two-story homes, they're predominantly below our street grade because everybody on Lone Oak wants to be looking west. So both those homes are two stories looking to the west as far as their predominant window exposure. But the end result is, from Erbs, where we will end up being extremely limited, if visible at all. I also wanted to clarify, just further out on a little bit about the trail. I had written notes here, I had a feeling the trail would be a point of discussion and some, maybe a little bit of confusion. The trail, I was approached as soon as Anna Huber, COSCA, knew that I was, my wife and I were buying this parcel. The trail starts on Erbs. She has an easement through the church that is on Erbs, through the side yard there. She has another easement through one of those two houses, actually the vacant lot, and then the big white house. So right now, COSCA has trail access formalized from Erbs up to Lone Oak. Then over time, depending on what we call it, Patrick called it an unofficial trail. I'm a property rights guy, I call it trespassing. But, but they've been walking across our property, the property, as well as horses, up to the Parmenter HOA. COSCA also has a blanket easement over that property for trail purposes. So as we sit today, our parcel is the missing link. With us granting an easement, we bring some closure to that, you know, that nebulous situation. And what I, what I asked of COSCA and Anna was to allow us to, to grade our parcel, the pad, and have an opportunity to kind of stand there. I don't want to push the trail all the way to the north just for the sake of spiting somebody that they need to walk all the way down to the end and turn around up in Parmenter and come all the way back. So, you know, so what we intend to do is just find a good logical spot a little further north from the end of our proposed pad, but probably not too much further back than some of the existing lines you see. And it may very well end up being the northerly line that shows on some of the aerials. We also are conditioned and are in agreement that we will grade whatever trail we end up choosing with COSCA having some rights to approve. We'll install a stepover gate, we'll put a little bit of fencing. We set 10 feet on both sides of the stepover gate, both top and bottom. And the reason for the. And the reason for the 10 feet was, at first, COSCA said, well, shouldn't you put fencing along the entire length of the trail? And I said, well, to be honest, I mean, we've got a lot of land, we don't really know what we would do with all that open space. If the fence is for our benefit, I'd rather not pay for it right now and kind of see how it goes. I think that fencing on the 10 feet both sides defines the trail. I think it gets people, particularly the horse people, I don't expect them to be wandering, and I don't even expect hikers to wander. So we have it because we own both sides, we do have some latitude to go back later if we're concerned about people wandering off trail. But at the moment, the conditions are written that we get to pick the exact location with Anna participating after the pad is graded, and then we put in the stepover gates and a little bit of fencing. With that said, in closing, I'd like to state that we have reviewed the staff report, all of the conditions, and we are in agreement with all of them. I want to thank staff, certainly for their help, but I want to give out a special notice to Carlos, as has been mentioned by Kelvin. Carlos is new, this was his first project, I think, in the first week of May, and, you know, I've been doing this for 33 years, so I can be a little pushy sometimes. So I'm sure I called and emailed him, maybe more than other applicants or that maybe he would have liked, but he was tremendously helpful and responsive in getting this to where we are tonight. And with that, we would ask for your support and approval, and if we can answer questions, we'd be happy to. Thank you.
Commissioners, are there any questions? No?
I have a question just regarding utilities. Is the property have connections to water, sewer, gas, or is it going to be on a water tank?
The short answer is yes, and it's actually a lot better than to the naked eye. There's a 12-inch water line that runs in Lone Oak, somewhere all the way to the south, and goes all the way through our property down to the far end, and somehow gets up into Rayshire. So there's a water line there. Interestingly, everything on Lone Oak is septic, but the community below us, coming off of Fallmouth, there's a little gated community, I'm drawing a blank on the name, I think it's five houses.
Yes.
Okay? That community was required by Public Works to extend sewer up their side slope so that it deadends at our property about 200 feet from the backside of our pad. So we have been conditioned by Public Works that we will be installing a manhole there and running sewer 250 feet, plus or minus 200 feet, for us to serve. So to some degree, that's a benefit for Lone Oak, and I say to some degree, most of Lone Oak falls away.
Right.
Towards Thousand Oaks hill crest.
Right.
So it'd be difficult for most of the houses to pump back that way, but if there was ever catastrophic failure, you know, of some of the septic somewhere on Lone Oak, there is at least an opportunity then that we'll be bringing sewer a little bit closer. Both gas and electric are in the street, across the street, serving the two houses across from us.
Right. And as far as staging areas for construction, for your equipment, has that been formalized with Public Works?
Well, it's only going to be a little tight during the first stage of grading, because of course, once we get the pad done, we'll have plenty of room up there. There is, at the end of Lone Oak, when I say end, I mean the end of the paved section.
Yes.
There's a good, huge, probably 40 feet.
Turnaround there.
Kind of turnaround there that we'll be able to, you know, store some things there. So it shouldn't be too bad for one house.
Great. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Okay, thank you. Let's see. This is the time for public comments. We do not have any public comments, and so you can come back and talk for another five minutes if you want. Do we have any questions of staff? No? I feel like our questions have been answered, we've been talking a lot, asking a lot. Okay. So do you have another five minutes available, if you want to say anything?
No, thank you.
Does staff have any more comments?
Staff has nothing further to add at this moment.
Then I guess we will close the public hearing, and I will open up the floor for a motion or discussion.
I'd like to make a motion. Like to make a motion to adopt the resolution. This is for case Z 2019-70298. I'm sorry, wrong one. Yes, HPD 2018-70726, to approve hillside plan development based on the findings and subject to the conditions contained in the resolution.
And if I may, Chair, just note that we had that supplemental for condition number 21, that's also would be included in that motion, please.
Yes. Commissioner Lanson, I had you up here as the speaker, did you have something? Okay. Are there any comments on this? This is quick. Okay. Why don't you set us up for the vote, then?
Motion carries 5-0.
All right, so it appears item number eight, department reports, we do not have any. Item number nine, commission comments and AB 1234 reports. I'm looking at you right now.
I wonder why. Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess this is the point where it's appropriate to revisit the question we had in our first case this evening, and I agree completely with the comments this now Mr. Heer made, that it's not really appropriate for us to get into traffic policy, that's not our jurisdiction. At the same time, I think it is appropriate to register a concern that Commissioner Bus raised, that Speaker raised. We all agree, it's a wonderful park, we voted for it 5-0. It's a great improvement to our community. At the same time, it may create a traffic hazard, and I think it's appropriate that in passing along the recommendation to the council, that we also pass along concern that something, that staff look at that intersection by the park, look at the possibility of putting in a four-way stop or some other form of traffic mitigation there, so that everyone can safely enjoy the park.
Are there any other?
I'd like to add a comment to that. One of the things that I also brought up was, in construction of that park, we need to think about who that park would be serving, and I recognize that there's two neighborhoods directly adjacent to that, including Caneo Oaks, which doesn't have a park of its own set up like that. The neighborhood over to the west of it does have one next to Glenwood Elementary School, there's a park there, but there's nothing to the south of that. And so I was thinking that that may be a portion of the community that's served by that park, and I would like to encourage the city to think about those residents and how their access is affected, because it would be through Page Lane, and Page Lane is a difficult place to travel by foot. And I don't know what provisions we have for that, but if there's a way that we can encourage that, I would love to.
I would venture to say that all of the commissioners are on the same page with that. We want something to be done, but we want it to be done in the proper way, with the proper procedure and the proper investigation.
Thank you. I've made that note, and I will forward that along to our Public Works and Traffic Division.
Thank you. So there was a couple items that I neglected to do for items 7B and 7C, which would be VTTM 2016-70458 and HPD 2018-70726. There is an appeal process if there was somebody who was not happy with the decision that we made tonight. Any aggrieved party who wishes to appeal the planning commission's decision may do so by filing an appeal with the Community Development Department within 10 days. And I'm sorry that I did not bring that up at the appropriate time. Are there any other commission comments? All right. Let's see. We are at item 10, staff update. Item A, follow-up items. Are there any follow-up items at all? Okay. Upcoming planning commission meetings?
Thank you, Chair. Next meeting is currently scheduled for July 8th, there's currently a full agenda for that. Staff is well underway on preparing the packet in consideration of the upcoming holiday.
Okay, thank you. Do we have anything else on the agenda? Thank you all. The meeting is now adjourned to the next regular meeting of July 8th, 2019. Thank you, everybody.